Hi, College Meeting to Order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, November 26, 2018, and the time is 7 o'clock PM. There are a number of items in the table file. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, enclosed you have a Northfield Forward Committee Report from Board Member Marla Colangelo. There are several personnel items, including appointments and increase, decrease, and changes in assignment, and also there's an updated Fall 2018 Student Activities Report.
Okay, excellent. If there are no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to announcements and recognition. Dr. Hillman?
And shockingly, but we think it's due to the short Thanksgiving week last week, we have no announcements and recognition attending, so we will dispense, and I'm guessing that that will be catching up then at the December 10th meeting.
Yes, exactly. So unless there's anything board members wanted to add, we can move on. Okay, we'll move on for our items for discussion and report. Our first report tonight is our Fiscal Year 2018 Audit Presentations. We welcome Craig Pappenhager with Cliff and Larson Allen. Craig's been here a number of times. We always enjoy seeing you, and he will present the results of the 1718 Fiscal Year Audit Executive Summary, and then Val Murdestock will also comment on the audit as well. So welcome, Craig.
All right, very good. Thank you for having me. I'll just kind of run through and kind of hit the high points here. We did issue the audit reports, of course. That's what you're having in front of you to approve and accept tonight. A clean opinion on the financial statements, again, no surprise there. I don't think so. Very good results on the numbers. We're happy with the numbers as reported and received support for everything we asked for, and very good cooperation, of course, again, with your accounting department. So good results there. As far as findings, we have, I believe I have one. So very clean audit. So no internal control comments on the financial statements themselves. We go to what's now called the Uniform Guidance, Grant Guidance Audit, or Single Audit, which is an audit of federal program expenditures. This year, we audited the Child Nutrition Program and the Title I Programs. I did have one finding for one element of compliance on the Title I Program, which was related to time and effort reporting, and it was a procedural finding. So basically, looking for just a little bit more documentation of reviews on time and effort, but otherwise, no question costs on any of the expenses that were charged to the program. So very, very good results. Legal compliance, this is something that we look at each year as well. Kind of a couple angles. So we have certain statutes that we are required to audit for compliance over the district itself, and then also for student activity funds. So we perform those compliance audits. No findings to report there either. So very good results, again. And there was a change in accounting standards. So this year, we had to kind of bring on and report the full accounting liability for other post-employment benefit obligations. So which is to say, employees who depart the district and elect to continue participating in district health benefits, health insurance, until they reach Medicare age 65. So just a change in the liability that's reported. So we did call that out in a separate paragraph in the audited financial statements. This is not a qualification or anything negative on the financial statements themselves. It's just, under auditing standards, we have to call out, hey, something is different than it was last year. And that's what we did. Kind of high level on the general fund itself. General fund revenues came in just over $50.4 million. Expenditures, just under $51.8 million. In total, you spent down fund balance in the general fund by $1.3 million. In comparison to what you had budgeted, you did budget to deficit spend just over $1 million. So kind of trended in that direction. Couple things that kind of influenced that was on your long-term facilities maintenance. You used some of those levy dollars as a transfer to the debt service fund to make a first debt service payment on the facilities bonds. So that was kind of the biggest, I guess, difference between the actual deficit spend and what was budgeted. You are, of course, under a new teacher contract, faculty contract for the 1718 year. Top line revenues, you'll see this in a few slides, but positive add to the student enrollment at the district. Again, that's five years running now. That brings in more state aid revenue to the district, as well as a general education formula rate increase of $120 per student unit. So that also increases revenue to the district. At the end of the year, I'll call it the operating capital line item. It's column kind of in the middle there. End of the year with operating capital fund balance of $556,000. Kind of going forward, I believe your goal going forward is about $200,000 minimum balance there. You do have some expenditures coming up in future years that'll use some of that. Health and safety, I'll just talk on that one briefly. So this is basically, the last year, we'll be talking about health and safety fund balance. This is the one, one of the two that kind of now is running through long-term facilities maintenance. And the only thing coming through health and safety now is just levy adjustments up or down for work that was already performed. So that is what happened in the 1718 year. You had a negative levy adjustment of $107,000. Ending fund balance in health and safety is a negative $188,000. And that will be, basically have to be closed out at the end of the 1819 year and covered by unassigned fund balance in the general fund. So that's kind of going, looking ahead to next year, which we're almost halfway through now, what you'll see kind of in next year's audit. So just a few charts and graphs here. So the general fund revenue by source, so looking at where does the general fund revenue come from. In total, again, general fund revenue is $50.4 million. About 73% of that comes from state aid. Property taxes make up about 20%. Other revenues, this is a little bit of a difference when I flip to the next slide here, but other revenue sources is 2.6% this year. You'll see a bigger slice a year ago, and the reason for that is for the 1718 year, Cannon Valley is off on its, you know, it's its own entity now with its own employees. So you're no longer the fiscal host for the 1718 year. So that does make a difference kind of on the size of the pie chart for revenues as well as for expenses in special education, which we'll see that in another slide or two. General fund revenue for, this is prior year, so 2017, so kind of the greenish shaded slice of the pie you'll see is about 12% a year ago, and that again is related to Cannon Valley. Expenditures, about 82% of the district's expenditures go into the classroom. That's the large slice of the pie on the left there. So in total, $42.7 million going into the classroom within the general fund itself. The chart on the right kind of shows the breakdown then of the 82% instructional. What is the instructional? Most of it's regular instruction, followed then the next largest slice is special education. You'll see the special education slide or section kind of shrink for this year. In the year prior, if I look at special education, it's about 26%. Current year is 20%. And again, that's just because of Cannon Valley. So just the flow of the revenues and expenses there, that's the only change. Otherwise, I'm holding pretty close, you know, 82% going into classroom, about 83% a year ago. So if you look at it from that perspective, not a lot of change. And last slide here, this is the enrollment trend, but just kind of shows you the five-year trend here of positive enrollment growth within the district. So that's always, when that chart is angling upward, it's usually a good thing. So from a financial perspective, it's good for the district. From a programmatic perspective, I think it's good as well, although I don't, I don't look at, you know, programming in general. But that's what I have for, I guess, prepared remarks for you. Ben and Jerry, entertain questions now, or just bring the meaning back to you?
Questions or comments for Craig? Allen?
So I have one comment and then a question. So my first comment is just, congratulations, Val. I think it's just having such a clean audit, and I mean, just what you've done in terms of being a good steward for resources and the team here. I mean, it's just, I think the clean audit and then seeing the 82% continuing going direct instruction is just, it's fantastic. So that's my comment. I'm very pleased. My question is on, in the detail, on page eight, you go into detail about the student activities, which I know we've talked about in the past too, but it was more your opinion. It's not a qualified opinion about how we're trying to balance student leadership in terms of student activity fund and the process, and then what your qualified opinion is about how to manage those pieces. And I don't know whether I'm directing at you, Craig, or at Val. Just maybe explain a little bit about what our process is, what sort of safeguards we have in place, even though we're, you know, with, even though it's not a part in the qualified opinion quite what was recommended.
Any comments?
I'll start. So the qualification on the student activity funds is strictly on the cash receipts process. So for one, this is really, the student activity fund statement is not full, what I call full GAAP or full accrual-based accounting. It's basically cash in and cash out. So for what I call GAAP basis accounting encompasses much more than just cash in and cash out. That's what the district statements are. Student activity funds then as well, from a kind of a cash perspective, it's harder to get control on decentralized cash intake. Once it's in, I think you have good controls on the expenditure side. So that's high level, how I'll kind of characterize it. Val, you can add.
I will add a little bit to that. So correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, but if we, if our student activity funds are not under board control, we are required to do them on a cash basis, correct?
Correct, yes.
So MDE requires that because of the way we have our student activity fund structured. So that is one piece that is frustrating about. We're required to do it this way, you know, but it gets written up because of that piece of it. The receipts piece of it, I understand from an auditor perspective how that comes to play. From a operational perspective, from my point of view, it doesn't really operate that much different than our decentralized receipts at a building. There are just more, more opportunities and areas because it is students fundraising. Obviously, it's different than a teacher collecting field trip money. So I do get it from that regard, but the process and procedures are the same for both the receipts for the student activity and the receipts for our buildings. That process doesn't really look any differently other than who's actually collecting the money, if that makes sense. So just because it's a wider range, we have chose to have our student activities not under board control because it does provide more opportunity for the students to have control and voice over what the expenditures are, and I think that's a better opportunity for them. So, and this is a very common finding in most school districts that have the not under board control. So.
Let's ask Craig, how common is it?
How common is the finding, Craig?
Everyone that we issue.
There you go. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, there's no, as there's no change, you know, it's not like anything, you know, deteriorated from a quality standpoint there to other years. That's how it's been.
So just to segue a question, is there any sort of motivation then with maybe Gatsby or some of these others that would potentially address this if it seems to be this ongoing, I mean, it's an issue, but it's not. I mean, there's control there. It's just not the way, you know, control is done in other aspects. So is there a way, because it's obviously across the board, would there be some, is there any discussion or sort of thought process around how we would resolve this? Because I think everyone collectively realizes it's a good opportunity for students, and we want to protect that.
Right. There is a change coming down a year out. So what, there's going to be another change with the government accounting standards. It's maybe an old act to pull those student activities more under the umbrella of the district. So that's something, you know, there's a lot of study being done on that right now. So I can't comment what the end result's going to be, but it's possible that, you know, I know there's a change coming. I just don't know exactly what it is.
Something to look forward to.
I suspect there will be lots of conversations about it, so.
Other questions, comments?
No.
Some years ago, the state had guidelines about administrative being a part of the budget, some percentage. Dr. Hillman, can you fill me on what that number guideline is?
I think what you're, I think what you're referring to, Noel, is the, in the days, that was actually reversed where the goal was that districts should be, they were trying to make sure districts were at least 80%, you know, of their budget to direct, you know, student instruction or pupil support. And this is just another year in a row where we've been well above that 80%. And so I appreciate you bringing that up. It's not something, that was really something under the Palenti administration, and it's not been made substantially public since then, but frankly, that's something that we look at every year. You can actually download all of the data, which we actually do, and then you can sort it and determine where you are in the state. And we are always proud, top 20 every year, of 332 school districts where when you look at how much money we spend on direct instruction plus pupil support every year for as long as, and Val and I have been looking at it, we're in the top 20 districts. And we are also, when you look at administrative costs, we are in the bottom 20 districts, you know, in terms of amount of spending per administration. So, you know, we have that, you know, that right flip where the large majority of our money, and when we compare ourselves to the rest of the state, we spend a much larger percentage than most, we spend a larger percentage than at least 80% of the other districts in the state on direct instruction and pupil support, and we spend less on administration than approximately 80% or at least no more than the, well, it's 300 and some districts in the state, so it's even a higher percentage. We like that, right? That's good. So we run a leadership administratively so that we're able to put the most resources directed to the classroom.
Thank you.
And maintain a double A plus bond rating.
I'm going for the triple A, but I suggest.
I would agree, and I think you've got, you know, if you look at it from the, from taxpayer support, I think you've got, the taxpayers seem to be very supportive of the district. That certainly helps with that plus 80% going into the classroom, because, I mean, realistically, the state funding kind of gets you kind of the bare, the bare minimum as far as the educational standards that you're looking for, and the taxpayer support just helps kind of bump that up a notch.
So this is the point where I will say that I'm appreciative that Craig has brought this up because we're going to be entering the legislative season here, and it is funding year. And so I will not, I will dispense with the long version of my rant against the fact that in the last 30 years, you can count on one hand how many times the state legislature has given us an increase that matches inflation. And when you look at 73% of our revenue comes from the state, we are really reliant upon them. And so the fact is, we need to be active in this next legislative session to make sure that we have the legislature fulfill its constitutional obligation of providing a uniform system of schools, which they are currently not doing. No.
And Dr. Hillman, continue on, that we can appreciate the support of the taxpayers to make up the difference.
Absolutely. In fact, if you look at the chart, basically, the Northfield taxpayers have given us the inflationary factor over the course of the last 30 years, and we could not provide the world-class instruction and opportunities for students without our taxpayers being able to step up to the plate, which they have done generously time and time again. And again, if you think about that, the truth is that we are fortunate that our taxpayers have been willing to step up and provide inflationary increases through operating levies. That's what the end result of the operating levy is. But that is certainly something that's unique to us, and really, it should be the state stepping forward and doing that. But we are grateful to the generosity of our taxpayers who have allowed us to maintain the fantastic programs that we have for kids. It's why we're a destination district.
Excellent. Other questions coming? Amy?
I was just, I was just wondering if you could go into a little more detail about how good this summary is and how we compare to other schools, and how fortunate we are to have Val working with us.
Well, you are fortunate to have a CPA and staff, so that always helps the cause as well. You know, to have only one finding is a remarkable result. There's, there's a lot of compliance that has to happen. And also keep in mind that one finding relates to about 2.5% of your overall budget. That's what we have to audit compliance on with respect to that finding. The other findings that you don't see are adjusting entries, which you commonly see other places, and then a financial recording finding as well, which you'll commonly see other places. So you don't have any, either of those. So tells you, you have good segregation of duties, very capable people, kind of managing the funds.
Excellent. Other questions, comments? Craig, thank you. We appreciate the support that you give us, and Justin and crew coming in to do the audit are always great, and so we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you.
Val, you have some information as well.
All right. So as much as we appreciate Craig's presentation, he is required to give you the technical nitty-gritty. And one of the things that I've wanted to do the last couple of years is to take the actual audit results and show it to you in a format that you're used to seeing from me, and kind of talk about the things that I've told you that I was expecting to happen with the revised budget, what actually happened, and kind of where the, you know, where the pluses and minuses came, came from. So basically, I literally took my revised budget presentation that I presented last December, so almost a year ago, and then just put in our actual numbers and compared what I, what I had projected. And so that's kind of what I'm going to walk through real quick. So our enrollment projection, you can see that bold line down on the bottom. I had projected that we would have 4,434.59 weighted, which is what our revenues generated on pupil units, and we ended up with 4,444.39. So a 9.8 weighted student variance, which is a .22%. Matt told me I had to put the percentages on there, so I was excited about them, but, so that is, you know, to be, you know, 10 students out of 4,000 is, we were feeling pretty good about that, especially with the increasing nature that we've seen. And so that was, that was good. So because revenue drive, the enrollment drives, you know, 75% of our revenue, our revenue budget actually was very close because the student enrollment was very close. So same thing, the auditor results are that third column, and then the budget actual is just the difference between the revised budget and the audited results, and then what that percentage variance was. So the property tax levy, if that number is ever widely varied, you should question my skills because we do that like a year and a half in advance. So that number is usually pretty solid. The only thing that really fluctuates there is any kind of miscellaneous tax payments we get for green acres and some other weird payment in lieu of tax things. So .19% variance there. The state sources, again, is the basic per pupil, the special education. So sometimes that can really fluctuate depending on the special ed formula and how that came through. But about $50,000 on that one, which I was very pleased with. Federal sources, we were about $74,000 higher than what I had projected, and that was due to a couple of grants that we got from MDE that were actually federal flow-through grants. Our MTSS grant was about $50,000, and that was all a federal, technically federal sourced grant. So it was just a handful of those types of things. So that was a 5.65% variance. And then our local sources was actually about $97,000 short of what I was expecting, or 6% variance. And when I look at that, there's a couple of different things that play into that. The, it looks like the participation fees for activities across the district were down a little bit last year, about $40,000. And so jewel ring, brand new, we will kind of dig into that and just see if there were certain sports that had lower participation or kind of what, what was driving that over the two prior years. And the other, the resale accounts, that was actually a little bit less revenue than I had projected as well. That was about $30,000. So that was the bulk of it. There's lots of things within the local sources. Some were over budget, some were under budget. Those were kind of the big standout ones for me. But overall, on a $50 million budget, to be $46,000 off on the, and we were over, we brought in more revenue than I projected in total, which is good, was a .09% variance from what I had projected in December last year. And the other reason I like to do it this way is because I can exclude the SEVSEC numbers in my numbers. Craig cannot do that for technical accounting purposes, so it's easier to compare year over year, which is another reason that I think it's helpful to look at it this way. And then for the expenditures, this is where it can get a little bit more interesting. There are quite a few different variables at play here. But same scenario, basically the revised budget as presented with a few tweaks because we do move the budget around as long as it matches in total with what was approved. But salaries and benefits was one of our bigger ones, and that, I mean, it was a .56% variance, $230,000 over what I had projected. And when I look at the salaries and benefits, it is a lot of little things that add up to that. A lot of the salary codes were $10,000 over or $20,000 over, you know, on a $600,000 or $800,000 line item. And so it's not really one thing that I could isolate, but a lot of little things, and it could just be that, you know, we brought in a new teacher at a higher rate, or, you know, those types of things. The purchase services was about $65,000. I don't think this is the right numbers. Are these different than the ones in your, oh, I'm not even looking at the right page, just ignore it. All right. So purchase services was under a little bit of what I budgeted. And I will say, the purchase services and supplies are the primary, what I would call controllable budgets for the buildings. And so they have a lot of leeway to flex back and forth between those. The budget is based on historical spending and averages, but sometimes they have more that, they want to bring somebody in to do something. Sometimes it's more about purchasing a supply or software or an app or something like that. So there is a lot of flex between those two. So there is a lot of flux between those two. So that was, the one big thing that I will say is in here is the laptop lease, the MacBooks for the staff. I had that budgeted in the purchase services because most of our leases have been in a 370 object code, which is me getting technical for you. That was determined to be a capital lease because we are able to purchase them with the dollar buyout purchase option at the end. So it actually gets classified under the capital and equipment, and that is just a UFRS MDE thing. And so that's one of the kind of swings that you'll see there is that was budgeted up under purchase services, but actually ended up being coded in the capital and equipment purchases. Some of the other things, the, under the capital and equipment, was the long-term facility maintenance bond payment that we transferred to the debt service. That was not included in the revised budget, and as we were going through the audit process and the entries for that, realized that that was a transfer that we had to make, and we brought that to the board a couple meetings ago to get that done. So that was one thing that was not included in the budget, and that was about $145,000. Those were kind of the big ones. Again, you can, it's a lot of just kind of swapping. The salaries really was one of the biggest drivers, and then the LTFM transfer. So 362, 790 over budget, or .71%. And then this is what it looks like when you bring it all together with the beginning fund balance and what I had projected for the unassigned fund balance. And this was really interesting for me to look at. And so what I had projected was spending down about $1 million, and we ended up spending down about 1.3. And again, we just walked through the expenditures that were over budget that really drove to that additional amount. But if you look at the unassigned fund balance, I had projected that we would end at about $11.6 million, or 22.6%, and we ended at 10.8, or 21%, which seems pretty significant. But when you boil it down, there was an extra, you know, $300,000 that we spent down that I had not anticipated. And the flip to the formula, the ending fund balance is 16.7 million. The rest of that difference is restricted. And so basically, what happened is we increased our restricted fund balances more than I had projected. So our operating capital balance went up about $100,000. Our LTFM went up about $180,000 more than I had originally projected in that unassigned restricted. And those are all estimates based on the budget and the way I think things are going to play out. But basically, if our restricted does better, it automatically is going to offset in our unrestricted. And so the other thing to keep in mind is $500,000 spend is basically 1% spending of our unassigned fund balance. And if you looked, you know, 362,000 is a .71% variance. So being less than 1% variance on $50 million, I feel is really good, but I, I'm even, you know.
We do that. Point seven. Who does that?
I do. But it is also very obvious when you look at this how critical that is because $500,000 swings us an entire percentage, more than an entire percentage point on what we're expecting for our unassigned. So I take that responsibility very seriously, and so I did want to explain kind of the things that are going into play. And even with less than 1% variances, which is great, it still does have an impact on the bottom line and what we can do moving forward. So that is the audit results and kind of just what I wanted to talk about and show it in numbers that were a little more, a format that was a little more familiar, and just kind of talk about the things that went into play there. So are there any questions specifically about that?
Thank you, Val. I really liked this presentation in tandem with the audit results. It really makes a lot of sense and puts it in context for us. So thank you for making that addition.
You're welcome.
Questions? No.
Is building heat in, go back one slide. I think it's one slide. Is building heat in purchase services?
Yes.
So the variations in the price of natural gas, for example?
Actually, natural gas is under supplies and other because that is a 440 object code. All of the other utilities are in purchase services.
But the point of my comment is you're trying to predict natural gas, which is a pretty tough one to predict.
Yes.
Thank you. Good report.
Thank you.
Great comment. No, I mean, the number of moving targets, and you highlight one, but there's several. So amazing. Other comments? Amy.
This is just a question on the enrollment report. I just wonder why, and I think I know the answer to this, but the 7 through 12 is grouped together instead of having like a middle school grouping and then a high school grouping?
Yep.
And is it just historically that way, or because of the athletics, or?
Nope, none of those, actually. So MDE, the way the formula works is the K through 6 is weighted at 1.0, and 7 through 12 is weighted at 1.2. And so when I do that weighted formula, 7 through 12 is one chunk for that. And so because the middle school is 6, 7, 8, we split it up based on how the weighting works for the formula.
And I think part of that too, Amy, is that when you get outside of the metropolitan area, I think it's fair to say that probably the majority of the school districts in the state, their high school is 7 through 12. You know, and so a lot of smaller districts, really small districts, they'll have a K6 configuration, and then their junior, senior high is a 7-12. And so the department and the legislature looks at, it takes more to fund a high school because you don't have an elementary school that has an industrial tech wing, for example. So I think it really looks at what are the grade configurations across the state and how can they fund that in a way that supports all school districts, you know, not just the middle school model.
Yep.
Ellen.
So I'm curious, we think this is fantastic. The format is great and the results are, you know, I mean, as Matt, as Dr. Hillman said, who does that? So you gave us a what's next sort of, you gave us one hint, which was you were going to be looking at why participation numbers were lower and whether specific student activities where participation is dropping off. Are there other sort of, Val looks at this as probably different perspective, like what do you think is what's next besides that?
So that was probably my biggest one. The salaries one is multifaceted, obviously, and that is something that I will be digging into pretty deeply just because we are upcoming on negotiations. And so I usually really do a deep dive for this revised budget cycle. Now that we have the audited numbers, the revised budget that I do at the next presentation is part of that, and so that will be part of that process is really diving into where were the salary variances and basically downloading all of the payroll and kind of projecting it forward and making sure that we're on target for this year, and then utilizing that to start the negotiation model. So that would be really the next big one. Each year kind of depends, you know, last year we looked at the energy charges, the electricity and the water and the natural gas, because that budget was kind of out of whack historically. And so each year, there's always kind of one or two that appear to have gotten missed in the budget process and haven't quite lined up. And so the participation is just an unusual one because that's been pretty consistent. And so we'll just dig into that and make sure that we're not missing something. And yeah, that and salaries, I think, are probably our big ones. Yeah.
Excellent. Other questions or comments? Jeff.
Good report. Thank you for being a good steward of the taxpayers' money.
My pleasure.
Okay, well said. All right, on that note, thank you.
Can I ask just a couple of comments here too? I just want to point out the fund balance piece. I think we really need to, this is the difference between us, you're going to start reading in the next couple of months, school districts that are making pretty substantial cuts. This is what prevents us from doing it. So we watch this number very closely, and even, we know this was a planned spend down, right? We knew when we presented, we told you we were going to spend it down because these numbers, remember, only go through June 30th. So they don't include any revenue from the operating levy that the taxpayers generously passed in November of 2017. So I think that that's really important. You get this report in December, you think, oh, it's this year, but this is really last year. So I think that that's a very important point. We are trying to make sure those dollars last as long as possible, so we anticipate that fund balance will go back up, but it is our buffer to make sure we can maintain programming. But I think one thing I also want to point out that makes our fund balance a little bit different of an animal than it used to be is the long-term facilities maintenance revenue program, which is a bill authored by Senator Kevin Dahl, teacher here at our high school. The fact that we now have a fund balance there in addition to the capital fund balance, which we're going to have a little bit lower, but the LTFM is a huge asset for us because in years gone by, we tried to budget about $600,000 in our reserve. What we always have in mind is what happens, God forbid, if a boiler breaks down, and that was the amount that we, we are building that long-term facilities maintenance fund balance where we have plans for that for the future in terms of, our goal would be to try to pay for a roof without having to bond for it. Imagine that. Saves us all the interest, be fantastic, right? That's what our goal is. However, if we did have something major, in the old days, not only we have had to take it from the capital fund balance, but we may have had to take it from the unassigned fund balance. So I think that the LTFM is an important piece because it is further protecting the unassigned fund balance for us, and I think that that's something we need to really consciously look at as we move forward. So those are just the pieces I want to point out. That fund balance, that is the piece that allows us to be different than most other districts, and you know that our goal is 16%. Well, every percent is $500,000, and you don't have to be taking a higher or lower math to figure out. If you don't keep on top of it, it can go from looking very good to looking very bad in a hurry. So we just wanted to emphasize that this evening.
Thanks. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for the presentations. It's always good to see you. Thank you for being here. Okay, we will move on. Our next item for discussion is bond sale dates and bond pre-sale report. Jeff Sealy is here from Ellers and Associates. Always good to see you as well, Jeff. There were some items in the table file. All members want to be sure they have that as we begin discussion. I think there were two sheets, correct, Amy, then?
The updated, yeah. Yeah, there are two pieces, one for this, and then the resolution for that comes later.
Okay. Oh, I see. Yes, because, okay, this will also be an item for individual action, that's right. Okay, I'm sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
Quite all right. Thank you for having me. Pleasure to be here. Congratulations on the successful election, and now we're going to sell some bonds. So what you have in front of you is what we called our pre-sale report. It's a look, you know, after the election, we update some of the numbers, look at the market conditions, and give you a projection of what we think will happen when we sell these bonds. So the first thing you might notice is that the power mount we have listed on here is $40,195,000 for these school building bonds. You have authorization to go up to $40,975,000. So that number is different. And the reason that's different is at this point, we start looking at what types of premiums are being paid on similar type bonds that are being sold. And a premium essentially is when the underwriter, the purchaser of your bonds pays you more money than what you're asking for. And in return, they actually get a little higher interest rate. The reason you see that in this particular market is interest rates are generally pretty low yet, and it's easier to sell a municipal bond at a little higher interest rate because remember, these underwriters are buying them than reselling them on the retail market. It's a little easier for them to sell those if they carry a higher interest rate. But it doesn't come free to them. They have to pay you extra money to get that. So you pay a little more in interest over the term of bonds, but you get the money upfront. That's the trade-off. That's called a premium. So we anticipate that you'll be getting a premium, and I'll mention a little more about that later. So obviously, these bonds are being sold to finance the projects in your November 6 election. We're looking at 20-year bond term. The principal will be due February 1 of 2022 through 2039, and the interest will be due every six months, starting August 1 of 2019. We will have a call date of February 1, 2027. A call date is basically a feature that we build into the bond that allows you to refund those at a future date. Refinance, refund, interchangeable word. So on February 1, 2027, you can go ahead and do a current refunding at that point, if it makes sense and saves money. Again, you're going to be carrying two ratings, like you did on the refunding bonds that we sold recently. You're participating in the state credit enhancement program, that's where the state will back these bonds. You have the state has a AAA rating, and of course, you have that very quality rating that we talked about before of AA+. We don't anticipate that the rating process will go much different because you just went through it, so they're going to be looking for real recent updates. They'll take a look at the new audit report. It's likely to go quick and have similar results with the rating. So excellent rating again. We're going to do a competitive bid process on this, take the best bid. I mentioned the premium. We're estimating about $1.1 million in premium being paid to you upfront for these. Now, we're going to be selling these just slightly different than the normal process that we went through with the refunding bonds. We're going to be using what we call parameter resolution. If you remember with the refunding bonds, we act, you actually authorized the resolution for us to proceed with it. We took competitive bids and we brought those results back to you. We took them into morning, brought them to a board meeting that evening. You award the sale. With this, the resolution that you're approving tonight has a parameter, and it's basically saying that if the true interest cost of the winning bid is 4% or less, then you're authorizing either Matt or Val and the board chair to award the sale on that date. Then several days later, when your board meeting comes up, you will be ratifying it, but those will be awarded by, like I said, it's, the resolution actually says superintendent, business manager, and the board chair. So the 4%, that is the key. If you're comfortable with that, then this resolution fits your needs. Now, we used 4%. We used 3.9% during the election process, but the reality is you're probably at about 3.6, given current market. But we used roughly 3.75 in this pre-sale report, so there's a little cushion there. So you're well below the 4% that the parameter is there to target. We use the 4% because as Joel and I discussed it, and later on, I think you talked to Matt a little bit about this, if the market changes and rates go up over the next four or five weeks, if you had a 4% bid, would you still go ahead and do it? And the answer is yes, because rates would be going up, so if you postponed it, then you're going to end up paying more. The only reason we would come back and say, let's reschedule or postpone is if something abnormal happened in the market, and we saw a tremendous jump in a very short period of time, and we thought if we let it go in our three, four weeks, it would come back down, then we would look at something like a delay or something along that line. So on page three, you have, obviously, there's several things they have to take care of. We have continuing disclosure and arbitrage monitoring. We have a little write-up on those, you can read those, and also the investment of your proceeds, so you'll want to look at your options with that. We listed the other service providers, Knutson Flynn Deans as a bond counsel, Bond Trust as a paying agent, Standard and Poor's as the rating agent. So Deets, on page four of this, we have the pre-sale tonight, and then there's a number of things that happen between now and when we actually sell, but as far as when the board will be involved again, it'll be January 10th. That is the actual sale day where we'll take bids, and if it meets the parameter, then Matt or Val and the board chair will sign off on it. And then the board meeting is January 14th. And then the board meeting is January 14. Closing date, that is the date in which the funds are actually transferred and becomes available. So that's January 30. So we actually ran the numbers, and page five is your source and uses. And basically, this gets you a little more, a couple hundred thousand dollars more than what you anticipated to go for the project. And of course, the par amount is less because of that $1.5 million estimated net premium, as you can see there. The structure is the same as what we said before. It's kind of a wraparound. If you look at page six, you can see it, your principal payments in that middle section are lower when you have existing debt. And as you pay off your existing debt, the new debt principal payments will be higher. And what that does is it creates this type of structure on page seven, where the red is your existing. This is your existing bonds converted to the estimated tax rate. So the red is your existing, and we have that drop-off in 20... Paid 2024, so that's fiscal 2025. That is where your future flexibility for your other capital needs come in. You want to time that. It gives you the ability to go ahead for those future capital needs and control, to some extent, the tax impact of that. Because again, what you would do is fill in that gap with anything in the future, should you have those future needs. So that gives you flexibility. And the last page on this just shows that we are within the tax estimate. If you take a $200,000 home, we estimated $21 before the election. Now we're estimating 19. So it's very close, but it is lower than the tax estimates.
I don't know how I'm going to get $27.225 out of my head, though.
You can just use round numbers. Any questions? So you have a resolution tonight, and that resolution is a parameters that you will be acting on a little later, I understand.
Yeah, and I just want to... I want to point out, I know some people are looking at the resolution. So you saw the piece that was included in the table file. We only included the first page of that resolution because the template that we used had the incorrect election date. So what we provided, rather than copying the rest of the resolution, the resolution you got said February 13. It was a holdover from a different district. We just... That first page just updated to the November 6. So that's the only difference. So I just want to explain that to board. And I know people were looking at it and want to make sure there's some clarity there.
Thank you. Excellent. Okay, so lots of information. Thank you, Jeff. Questions? So I'm still trying to figure all this out, but one question I have is if the district wanted to pay back the bonds earlier or quicker, or is there a possibility for that? And I don't know if that would ever happen, but...
Well, first of all, there's... It's very controlled, you know, for municipal bonds, in particular Minnesota. You don't really have the options for deficiences. The law basically says you will levy 105% of your principal and interest payment. So that is what you have to levy. The opportunities for deficiences, diffecence basically meaning paying off early, are very rare. And if they do come along, a lot of times, the timing doesn't work because you have to set up an escrow, and a lot of times, those are very inefficient. So the practical answer is there really aren't too many opportunities to pay off bonds early. What you might do is when you come on that call date, that's August, I mean, 2027, you could restructure the bonds and shorten them. And that would be very similar to paying them off early.
And I think it's important to note that, I would argue that similar... The refunding is close enough to the public equivalent of paying it off early. And if you think about our performance in that area in the last decade, we've saved, we reduced the taxpayer impact by $5 million?
Five and a half.
Five and a half million dollars. So I think it's a very fair point, just like someone at their house, they may put a little bit of this to try to refinance to make it. We do those same things. And so while we're not able to say we want to make an extra payment a year, like some people might on their house, by building in these call dates, we are by default saying to the taxpayer that we are going to look at that and do everything we can to be able to reduce the total tax impact, which, if you look at our previous performance in that area, we have a history of doing that, and we certainly have brought those projects in total, less than what they are originally projected. So I really, really appreciate that comment because we do want people to know that even though we're not allowed to make those, it's very difficult. I shouldn't say very difficult to make an extra house payment or an extra payment a year like someone might on their mortgage. We have some other tools that we have routinely used over the years to get to a similar result at the end of the day.
Excellent. Great question. Other questions, comments? All right. I just wanted to be sure I understood the parameters. So what's that that's doing is we're setting this level, and then that allows you to be flexible in terms of reacting to the favorable bond.
Right. One of the things we wanted to do was get the sale timing that was most advantageous. And a lot of times, what happens is on Mondays, we're flooded with... The market is flooded with bond sales because, for whatever reason, school districts tend to hold their meetings on Mondays. It's very, very common. So on the date of your regular school board meeting, there was quite a few bond sales already. So if we moved it to a Thursday where there was less... It's all about supply and demand, right? So if there was less competition for the bonds, the demand would be higher. So that was one of the things we were looking at when we decided to do the parameters. Otherwise, we would have just done a regular process like we normally do. So in the resolution, it is... It sets the target. So it says, if the true interest rate of the most favorable proposal does not exceed 4%, and there's a favorable recommendation from us, because if they give us some weird structure that doesn't fit, you know, we're going to point that out, the superintendent or director of finance and a board officer, I guess it is, any of the board officers, are authorized and directed to accept the proposal, and then later on, come to the board for ratification.
Oh, I see. Okay. Okay, excellent. Yes, Amy?
So I'm still trying to understand the premium part of it.
Yes.
So the amount that we're actually bonding is less than we have voter approval for, right?
Yes.
So but with the premium, that means we get... We'll end up paying more interest on the line. Just explain it one more time to me.
Okay.
And why we're not... Why don't we take out the full amount that we have voter approval for?
Well, first of all, it is... The amount of premium won't be decided till sale date. The bids will come in with a premium in the bid. So we take all that into account so we can compare. So essentially, if on, you know, each bond has annual maturities, right? And each one of those annual principal payments carries its own interest rate. It is not like a home mortgage where, you know, you have 3.75%, 15 years, okay? Every principal payment, annual principal payment, has its own interest rate. So it's serial bonds. So it's... That's why it's called a bond issue, not a bond. So how premium works is, say you look at your maturity, your principal payment, three years out, and the normal market rate would be 3%. You may be paying 5% on that particular maturity, but they might be giving you $50,000 upfront to buy that extra interest rate from you. And that extra interest rate is what's generating that. So if you're an investor and you can buy a three-year investment for 3% or 5%, you want 5%. But what's going to happen is the person selling it, the dealer selling it to you, is going to say, instead of a buck for this, 3%, this one's a dollar 10. So that extra 10% is what's called the premium. The price you pay is a premium. It's higher, but you're getting higher interest rate. Now, why does that matter to an investor? Because the interest earned is taxed exempt. So I'm actually getting a, you know, 30% bump on my interest because it's taxed exempt. So by getting a higher interest rate, I'm willing to pay you a little more money. That's how that premium is generated, comes back to the seller.
So how does that all work with the amount that we put on the ballot that voter...
Oh. So you have a limit of what you ask for on the ballot. However, there's also a limit on how much you can actually generate. It's called the production of the bond sale. So what most people see is that you ask for $40,975,000. They think par amount, that's it. But if you get a premium, then that secondary limit, which is a calculation based on how much production, how much revenue are you generating through this bond sale, comes into play. So essentially, there's a different number that takes precedence over the $40 million, 40.9 million.
So in... For some reason, we couldn't get the premium, then we would go back to the...
We would up the bond sale. We would do that on the sale date. So if you didn't get a premium, and it was sold right at par, then on sale date, in order to get you the money that you needed for your construction fund, we would actually bump the premium back up. See, we have the... On the bond sale, when we take the bids, we have the right, based on the premium, because we don't know what kind of premium they're going to submit. We have the right and authority to go ahead and adjust the par amount right at that time. So we'll get you the money you need.
So I think the key thing is that there are some financial... There are some financial strategies that we have asked LRS to help us with. At the end of the day, we're going to have the same amount of money that we had projected for the projects. It's just a matter of the pathway that we're using to get there.
Very well put.
So I think that that's the key thing, is that, you know, they are looking at, how can they best leverage, you know, the investors on that day? We will get... At the end of the day, we will have the same amount of money that we had projected for the construction fund. It's going to depend upon how we might get there to be able to do that. And actually, because we're having LRS help us with this, if you notice, based upon their projections, I think that page number eight is actually very important because I was only half joking when I said $27.225 in my head, because that's what we... If this were to come through the way that LRS projects it, the actual tax impact would be... We would still get the same amount of money for the construction fund, and it would yet be $2 less per year for our taxpayer. Now, $2 a year for that $250,000, it's not, you know, it might buy us one more Mountain Dune.
Mountain Dune.
You know, but the fact would be, though, that I think that that sends the message to the public that we are serious about being stewards of their dollars. And so if we are able to get the same amount of money through these pieces like the premium and those other kinds of things, because the investors are willing to pay a little bit more, that's exactly the strategy we want to take because it's going to cost our taxpayers less. And this is exactly why this gets into very complex finance. I mean, we have some very good finance people, but this is a specialized line of work, and LRS is as good as it gets, you know, when it comes to... They've advised us on numerous bond sales over the year. There are folks who have helped us save taxpayers $5.5 million because of their expert opinion. And so I just... I think that that's an important piece for people to know, is that this is a very... We have a technical board meeting tonight. We have a very technical report on the audit. We have a very technical report on the bond sale. And the fact is, at the end of the day, for folks in the community, we're going to have the same amount of money to use to build the buildings, but we're just going to get there in a little bit of a different way that most likely will positively benefit their pocketbook. Is that a fair summary?
That is very fair.
Good.
Very good.
Well said.
Is that helpful, Amy? Because you are trying to translate the highly technical part into what can we tell the person at the coffee shop?
Right. And that all makes sense. I'm just trying to make sense of how this chart fits with our original number. But I can see we're in really good hands, and I understand even better now why we are working with you, and I'm glad that you're working with us because you clearly are doing very good things.
Thank you.
For us as we go through this process. Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, and none of us have the expertise to do this. I mean, if you listen to what Jeff and Joel and Barbie and the folks at LRS go through, they don't teach that part in administrative school. You know, so the fact is, it's a very highly specialized piece here. And we do... I want to echo what Amy said. We really do appreciate LRS' support because, again, through their recommendations over the years of when to do refinancing and those things, we have saved or we've reduced the tax impact to our taxpayers by about $5.5 million in the last 10 years, and we would expect nothing different in the future.
Great.
Excellent. Any final questions, comments? No. Okay. Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
And you have been a partner all along, always, everything, all of our endeavors, but most recently with helping us figure out how to structure this bond in a way that we would be able to, you know, be good stewards of the dollars that the taxpayers will give us. Unfortunately, they recognize that and were willing to move forward with us. So we wouldn't have been able to do it without your help, honestly. We are so sincerely grateful, so.
Well...
It's fun to be sitting here talking about buying bonds.
Yeah.
Versus this summer, when we were all figuring out how to structure the bonds, and to come to this point, it's just so exciting. So thank you. And we know we're in good hands, as Amy said, so.
You're welcome.
We will... That... The resolution will be part of the items for individual action, and we'll be set to go.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you. Okay. So we will now move on to second board meeting of the month. We do committee reports. It's an opportunity for board members to talk about their school board liaison assignments and provide an update to board members. We have two committee reports. The first one was on Northfield Forward, which is actually in your table file, attached to some of the other table file information, I believe. So Margaret, if you want to present that?
Sure. I'm also our liaison to SEVSEC, and we don't really present a committee report because it's not technically a committee. But if anybody wants to have questions about SEVSEC tonight, I'd be happy to answer those too. So on Monday, November 19, I believe we held our second Northfield Forward meeting, and we heard a presentation from Hope Langston and Mary Grace Hansen regarding the World's Best Workforce Goals and Northfield Public Schools. Hope and Mary Grace will be presenting this same information cross out in the future, but rather on December 10 to the Board of Education, so I will not give any spoilers in this report. Although I did just, while we were talking, I did just pull up the PowerPoint, so I do have it, but not in the form, the final form that you will see it. The data provided by Mary Grace and Hope included Northfield's performance on World's Best Workforce 2018 Goals as measured by our MAP tests, kindergarten savers, MCAs, all other accountability testing, the ACTs given to the junior class, and our graduation rates, both at the high school and the ALC. It also stated clear implementation plans for any remedies that needed to be made based on the data. Northfield Forward members provided Hope and Mary Grace with their impressions of the presentation and suggestions regarding the PowerPoint and the data it contained, since they were going to be presenting to the board and to the public, I understand. So we... The members present gave their impressions of what was great and maybe what needed a little tweaking in the PowerPoint. It was a great evening. We didn't have as many people as usual, but we think it was because it was the holiday week, and people had scurried out of town early. So that is my presentation, and I do have the preliminary. So if you really are burning with desire to hear anything from the data, I can share it maybe, certainly.
Okay.
Excellent. Questions or comments on the Northfield Board meeting? Ellen and I were at that meeting as well, so thank you, Margaret, for submitting that report. I think what's good about it as well is that on Northfield Forward, it represents all district stakeholders, teachers and administrators and community members, and for them to see the report and students. Yeah, thank you for reminding that. Students, right, they had... They really contribute a lot to that group. So it was really an opportunity for them to see the report and to really have some opportunity to give impact or input in terms of how the ultimate report is presented. And it's good to have their input, and we appreciate that. Okay. The second committee report is from myself, and it was always a really fun C-Schools for Equity and Education meeting following an election. Equity and Education meeting following an election year, and so, we had, we had the opportunity to get some 2018 election results. So, I thought it would be interesting to talk about the bond referenda results across the state. So, on November 6th, 19 of 25 districts passed at least one question for a 79% approval rating. As you know, a bond can be done at other times besides November, so the total requests for this year included 31 of 45 districts passing at least one question. So, the overall passage rate was 69% for bond referendums asked for in the calendar year of 2018. That compares favorably with 2017, which was 56%, and 45% in 2016. Now, certainly, we know that the 2018 bond referenda request probably included some modifications, as did ours, but it was good to see that when school districts do come back, in some cases, likely, they were successful. Operating levies asked for that night, 24 of 35 districts passed at least one question for a 69% passage rate. Eight of those districts were simply asking for a renewal of an existing operating levy, and those passed by very wide margins. So, we know there's been some conversation at the legislature in terms of giving school board the option and the opportunity to just renew existing levies without voter approval. And one of the cases that's made, of course, is because they typically pass by very wide margins, and we know the cost and the expense of having an election, so being able to renew an existing, which of course would not technically raise anyone's taxes. Again, case in point, the districts that are asked that overwhelmingly agree with their boards on that. So, overall, at this, the, in St. Paul, we see a little bit of a different makeup now. Interesting tidbit, Minnesota is the only divided legislature in the nation, so we will stand alone with that, so that's really interesting. In the House, 44% are Republicans, for a total of 59, and 56% are Dems, at 75. So, there's a 56 Dem, 44 Republicans in the House, and in the State Senate, very narrow margin, only one more Republican senator than Democrat. So, that one, there will be key focus on individual Republican senators likely to move some initiatives through the House and the Senate. So, then, we were treated to a presentation by two journalists, Chris Megan from the Pioneer Press, and Brianna Briesbach with Minnesota Public Radio, and they sort of shared their perspective on the 2019 legislative session, which we're all, as Dr. Hillman said, it's a budgeting year, so we're all very anxiously anticipating the legislative session. So, some of the things that will likely come back as issues is the state's tax conformity with the federal tax code, gas tax, school safety, opioid addiction, and elder abuse. K-12 public education always polls very high with voters in terms of what they think are important issues, so we hope that legislators will get that message and address K-12 public education as a priority. Always talk about the special education cross subsidy. We feel that will also get some traction. Key issues, we know for Governor Wells, as a former teacher, he really does have a very strong command of the issues in K-12 public education. That being said, we will certainly hear about Governor Wells, and where his priorities will be when he releases his budget in February. The other thing that we did at the meeting, action was taken on the legislative platform for 2019. I did attach that, we won't, so everyone can see where our Schools for Equity and Education people will be supporting our school district with legislative priorities. Certainly, the money on the formula, as Dr. Hillman stated earlier, will be a key priority. Basic formula, we're asking for a minimum of $250 per pupil in each of the next two years, which is a 3% on the formula, and you know, it was 2% that we received back in 2016. So, the, we'll go in at 3, and see where we end up. The other presentation, just quickly, Pelsby, which is interesting, we all sort of knew that happened, but many things to keep track of. It's the, Pelsby stands for the Professional Educator and Licensing Standards Board, Standards Board, and as you know, the legislators were able to combine the Board of Teaching and the Board of Licensing, so it's outside of MDE now, and it's Pelsby, and they're doing some work around the four-tier licensing system, giving some more flexibility for educators who lack traditional credentials to be licensed, whether meeting state standards, and for school districts. We also are hoping to get some flexibility when hiring for, what we are, know are hard-to-find positions in math science and special ed. So, the Pelsby presentation was really informative. It's good work, it's hopefully good for teachers and for districts.
So, everyone's learning as we go, they really actually, I think, did an excellent job. One of the things that they also had an issue with is that any teacher applying this summer had to fill out a paper application, because the new online system isn't up yet. And so, you know, we thought, we were very concerned about the backlog, and we actually had plans for some of the teachers coming in, you know, under some of these new tiered licensers, to make sure we had a licensed teacher in the room with them at the time, but they got nearly all of the applications completed by the beginning of the school year, and we just, we did not know how that was going to happen, but we really need to complement Professional Education Licensing Standards Board. They did a great job in this first year of getting it up and going. There are a lot of questions from people as how we're transitioning to the four-tier licensure system. If you would like a, we could, Molly Beasley and I could give you a presentation on that, we've been to several of the training sessions, and it is going to increase flexibility in some harder to find areas. One of the areas I'd like to highlight is, it's going to really open up the doors for applicants in pure technical education areas, that maybe have worked their entire career in one of those vocational areas, but maybe don't have the traditional four-year degree. So, there's some exciting opportunities that it provides. Of course, anytime you have something new, there's also substantial challenges that come along with it, but it, so far, so good.
Yes. It does appear that the mission and objective of Pelsby is playing out. And then, just my compliments to Dr. Hillman for his work with helping see draft their 2019 legislative platform. It was extra work, extra meetings, but you weighed in with good priorities for not only Northfield, but the state, so thank you for doing that.
And I had to do most of that via email this year, because I wasn't able to make all of the meetings, but your, our voice was heard, we'll say that.
Yes, our voice was heard, and you contributed, which is great. Amy, question?
I was just wondering, how districts become members of C? Is there, it seems like there's a wide variety of districts.
So, districts, how they become a member of C is they, we join, every year, we authorize that, I think it's at the July 1st meeting, we authorize that payment, I remember right?
Thanks.
I think it's July 1, or the meeting in July. And so, what districts do is, they actually pay a membership fee to be part of it, and what you get for that membership fee with Schools for Equity Education are these updated reports, where we're getting really high-quality information. We attend probably about four general membership meetings a year together, and then there are also at least two regional membership, or regional membership meetings. And the key thing, the commonality of the districts who are part of C is they all typically are lower property wealth districts. And so, this goes back to, if you think about a year ago, when we looked at bond referenda, and we were going for about $190 million bond referendum, we are considered a low-property wealth district. St. Louis Park, going for $100 million bond refer, close enough, their average taxpayer was paying half of what our taxpayer would have paid for a very similar bond issue. And the fact is that the tax base in the St. Louis Park district's much more diverse, it's much more deep, more industry to spread those taxes out, and so, what we're trying to do is for Schools for Equity Education is helping the state legislature understand that there are different economic conditions in different schools, and because of the way certain formulas are constructed in law, some districts have an advantage over another. So, for example, there are districts, districts with higher property wealth can often much more easily pass operating levy and bond referenda, because the way that their community's economic infrastructure is situated, is that it doesn't cost the average homeowner as much as it does here, where we have a disproportionate amount of our taxes levied on versus the number of businesses that we have. So, really, what they're doing is they are our voice at the legislator, legislature, to make sure that we keep working on getting some of these things to address these inequities. One example, actually, I'll give you a couple of examples. Schools for Equity was one of the champions, along with the Minnesota Rural Education Association and Minnesota Association of School Administrators, on the Ag to School Tax Credit. So, the Ag to School Tax Credit, which was passed in 2017 legislative session, you know, immediately gave people who have agricultural, non-homestead property 40% reduction in their property taxes, because what we're saying is that school districts outstate with a tremendous amount of agricultural, non-homestead property, there was a disproportionate burden on those taxpayers, which made it very difficult, in some cases, for districts to pass bond referenda. While I have not done the line-by-line analysis, I think that's another difference in the passage of some of these bond referendums that you see now, because ag property does have that reduction. In fact, even with the passage of our bond referenda in November, agricultural taxpayers in our district will still pay less, or project to pay less on the school district debt service portion of their taxes than they were in 2017 before the Ag to School Tax Credit. That's an example of how Schools for Equity banded together to help make legislative change that really had a dramatic impact for Northfield Public Schools taxpayers. Does that, that help?
But I guess, yes, it's very helpful. I just wanted to clarify that any school district can join.
Absolutely. I bet. And if they'd like, they can contact us, and we'll put them in touch with Brad Lundell and Doug Griffin, and help them, the more the merrier.
Excellent. Any other questions? Well, stay tuned, it should be a wild ride, this legislative session, starting very soon, the budget's being developed, et cetera. Okay. So, that takes care of our committee reports. We'll move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there was, I believe, just one page of personnel items in the table file to be added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Move by Margaret, is there a second? Second by Ellen. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will move on to items for individual action. We actually have four items for individual action tonight. One is a resolution. So, the first item for individual action is the fiscal year 2018 audit. So, is there a motion to approve the 2017-18 audit report as presented? Move by Jeff, is there a second? Second by Amy. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the 2017-18 audit report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second item, just to point a clarification, Dr. Hillman, I, this resolution is, we haven't offered any adjustment to that. Correct?
Correct.
I'm just trying to make sure I had the right one.
Correct, yes.
Okay. So, this is a resolution, so is there a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the approval of the sale of the General Obligation School Building Bonds, Series 2019A, coveting and obligating the district to be bond by and to use the provisions of Minnesota Statute Sections 126(c) 5.5, to guarantee the payment of the principal and interest on the bonds as presented? Move by Noel, is there a second? Second by Ellen. This is a roll call vote.
And can I just point out there that, this, in your table file, you just, again, I want to reiterate, that there was a replacement for the first page of the resolution, and the only thing that changed was the date of the election. We just, there was a template that had been used, it was the incorrect date of February 13th, we caught it, but I just want to make sure that people point, there's nothing else different in the resolution, other than that date on the first page.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion, and a second is a resolution, so we'll call them. Anita?
Aye.
Stratmo?
Aye.
Wonau?
Aye.
Colangelo?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Third item for individual action is the District Management Plan for Lead in Water that we reviewed at our last board meeting, so is there a motion to approve the District Management Plan for Lead in Water as presented? Move by Ellen, is there a second? Second by Amy. Questions or comments about it? The plan was included in your packet, so if there's any questions or comments? Amy?
I have a question.
Sure.
I just was wondering what the magic of the five-year, every five years it has to be tested, is there any reason why five years is chosen, or?
I don't know, in terms, it's a piece that we're directed to be able to do that by the legislature, in terms of having that piece reviewed, so I don't know if there's research behind the every-five-year piece, it's just that we follow the law, and the law says that you have to do it every five years. I think the reason, one of the reasons that they've done this is that, in the past, there's been some trouble with some of these kinds of, for example, we've been following this plan, we've been doing something very similar for years and years, but what we know is there are some districts that, from time to time, either passing off between Buildings and Grounds Directors, or other things, where the testing gets missed. And so, before we were required to have you adopt, we've always had a plan, for, well, not always, but for, as far as I can remember, we've had a lead-in water plan. But I think what has happened in some districts, there were some testing issues where people had either missed it, or unintentionally skipped it, and it had been adapted before they had tested it again. And so, the concept of doing the, requiring the testing every five years is to make sure that there is a point in time where we're looking at those things in a required way.
Do you have, like, a five-year calendar or something, that will remind everybody every five years, or?
That's exactly, yep. So, one of the key things that Director of Buildings and Grounds, Jim calls, is that this will be added to the other safety plans on our website, and so, what happens is, if we were to have a new Buildings and Grounds Director, but let's cross our fingers, because Jim's great, we don't want another one for a long time, what would happen is, part of our transitional process would be to show, because this is, we also have a radon plan, we also have others, part of that job for us as an administrative team to change that is to make sure that we are onboarding that person in such a way that they understand all the requirements. Now, we also contract with IEA, who, as we've contracted with them for our environmental planning for some time, one of the first things that a new Buildings and Grounds Director would do, would be to meet with IEA, who would then, they're, again, a backup for us to make sure that we're not missing any of the pieces that, because frankly, every year in the legislature, there's some kind of change to some of these requirements, and IEA allows us to make sure, they help us make sure that we're staying on top of those things, because, again, just like you heard from a technical perspective on finance tonight, some of these environmental protection pieces get very technical as well, and so, when we, we try to do most of this kind of work ourselves, when it gets to a technical level that supersedes what we have the ability to have on staff, that's where we look for some of these partners to work with. And IEA works with a number of different school districts, so I don't know what the magic thinking for the legislature was in the five-year requirement. I think it's just to make sure that, at least every so often, and I can see how these things tend to work as well, is that you have to pay for this. I mean, so, asking people to do it every year is probably not reasonable, it's also not reasonable to say, oh, you can just do it every 10 years, because this is really important to kids, right? So, making sure that there's some kind of process, and then it's on us as the administrative team, and working with IEA, if there's a change in that position, to make sure those folks are provided that information when they come on board.
If there's any new plumbing done, I assume they do test immediately, because of, there's no lead in anything that's new, right?
You know, the plan covers how we, it's a scheduled adjustment every, at least every five years.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Questions, thank you.
Okay, so, we have a motion to approve the District Management Plan for Lead in Water, and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our last item for individual action is the Dundas Dome Lease Agreement, which we reviewed at our past board meetings. So, is there a motion to approve the Dundas Dome Lease Agreement for the time period between January 1st, 2019, through December 31st, 2019, as presented? Move by Margaret, second by Jeff. So, any questions or comments on the Dundas Dome Lease Agreement? We have a motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So, we now, we'll move on to items for information, we have several of those this evening. We have several of those this evening. First is just really an announcement, as Margaret mentioned, the World's Best Workforce Public Hearing will be prior to our next board meeting, Monday, December 10th, at 6:30 PM here in the High School Media Center. That public, or the World's Best Workforce Report will be presented, will provide opportunity for community members to comment at that time. We will then follow our regular school board meeting at 7:00 PM, of which we will have an opportunity as a board to ask questions about that report. In your packet was a Police School Liaison Officer Contract, Dr. Hillman.
Yes, and so this is, we're completing the third year of our School Resource Officer Contract. We've got the old contract language, Chief of Police, Monte Nelson and I have talked. When you get this, or when you get this contract on December 10th, it's going to replace the terms Police School Liaison with School Resource Officer. It's just antiquated language that we're going to update, but it is the end of our cycle with the city, and we have used the School Resource Officer for a number of pieces of support during the school year, including teaching DARE to our fifth graders, and then, of course, providing support across the system for students inside and outside of the school day. And so what we're looking at is recommending a renewal of that for the next three years. What I do want to point out is that the City of Norfield recently did complete a compensation study, and it's not just their police department, but across the board, there were some places where they just had not kept up with the market in terms of the salaries for their employees. So what you'll notice is that the, we have an increase over what we've paid previous contracts because of that salary adjustment. Now, what we have worked out, what I've worked out with Chief Nelson, is that because we're in the middle, this falls into a middle-of-hour budgeting year, we are going to pay the same amount that we did under the last contract through the end of this fiscal year, and then we would adjust. And again, what we have done is typically pay 50% of that officer, of an average officer's salary and benefits. And so the key thing is, you're going to notice that when we hit July, that's going to go up, but that allows us to plan for that in the 2018-19, or 2019-20 budget, no, 2019, there we go. And so I think the key thing is that, I just want you to have this meeting ahead of time. Again, there were some language changes, just from Police School Liaison term to the School Resource Officer, from a perspective of, on the 174 school days, when school is in session, we get far more than 50% of that person's time. And then, of course, when school is not in session, you know, they are working in other capacities for the city. So it has worked out to be an equitable arrangement over the years. It's a partnership that we appreciate, and we look forward to continuing that relationship with the City of Norfield. So just want to make sure I brought it to your attention, that you see that contract now, and then we'd be asking you for approval on December 10th. The contract does expire at the end of December, so it's a piece that we want to get taken care of here before the beginning of the new year.
Excellent, thank you, great summary. So questions, comments on the Police School Resource Officer Agreement that we will, again, want to approve? Next meeting.
I just want to have you go into a little more detail of what the Police Resource Officer does, and I'm glad to hear that they use more than 50% of their time during the school year here, because that was going to be my question, how it averages out 50% or more for the whole year. So can we talk about what we use them for?
Sure, so we use the School Resource Officer for a variety of activities. Again, as I mentioned before, they typically are the primary instructor for our fifth-grade DARE program, that's the side camera now, that's drug awareness, yep, and it's really, it's really about drug awareness and alcohol awareness, and it's really transitioned to focusing on positive decision-making. So we have had that part of the service from them. In addition, we provide support for a variety of things. So it could be, if there's a criminal activity, you know, on campus, they could help investigate that piece, that's another part that they do. From time to time, we will have circumstances where there might be some kind of outside-of-school issue that we need some assistance with. So it could be if there are, you know, two non-custodial parents who have a concern over a piece about who gets to pick the student up. We're not lawyers, you know, we read the document, but from time to time, we need some support from a police officer to be able to help us understand those kinds of things. I think the most important thing that Officer Wees is continuing to try to do is to build relationships with students. So while we have one officer that is used across all five buildings, really trying to make sure that, building a relationship with students and with staff, so that there is a comfort level with that person, you're not only here in the school, you know, but in the community as well. So from things like prevention, from things like making sure that students understand that a police officer can be here to assist them and help them, to helping us with a lot of day-to-day kinds of things, in terms of whether it be criminal investigations that are not all that frequent, or assisting us with some of the other kinds of things like we mentioned before. So anything from any kind of accident that were to happen here, to helping us with custody circumstance, and basically everything in between. What I would, what I would hear from some of our secondary staff is that they'd love to even have more School Resource Officer time. We think this is a reasonable approach to go, but what I would say is that, you know, the DARE program is a big piece, building relationships with students is an important component of it. And then, again, assisting us, you know, with six different locations and those kinds of things, and 4,000 students, there are more things that come up where we do need some kind of law enforcement support than anyone would really realize any given day. And we've had a very positive relationship with the Norfield Police Department, and it's something that we've had this arrangement for quite a long time, and it's been very, it's been a good relationship that we've had with them, and we do appreciate Officer Wees, who's been working for probably the last 18 months in this role, has really done an excellent job of really connecting with staff and with students, and being a good resource for all those involved.
So where's the officer's office?
Yep.
And who, I understand that the officer is an employee of the Police Department?
Correct.
But who do they report to in the school district?
So the fact is that, you know, he's an employee of the city, so he reports to the Chief of Police. Now, what he does is he does work in concert with our building administrators, so really works primarily with our high school administrative team here at Norfield High School, Mr. Lear, Mr. Ekoff, Mrs. Thompson, Mr. Olson is needed, on the activities role at the middle school, working with Mr. Jellino and Mr. O'Keefe, and then our elementary principal. So really, it is really coordinated in terms of the local coordinations by the building administrators. Here at the high school, he also works very closely with our security monitor, Kim Bauer, in terms of her work here. So he really reports to Chief Nelson, and then the activities here are coordinated. He has an office here at Norfield High School, the office is shared with Security Monitor, Kim Bauer, right here in the main high school office. He also has an office at the middle school, does not have an office at the elementary schools, but he splits time based upon need at those areas locations.
Thank you. Great question. Noel?
I have the privilege of having a lot of kids going to Greenville School that walk past my house, and one day they were coming back, and one had a badge on it, and I thought, like, hey, police badge. So I was out doing yard work, and I said, what is that police badge for? He said, well, the officer came to our school and talked to us, and he is really my friend. And I thought, that was a transition that was really important to hear, that he's my friend, and they come, and he can be trusted. And I thought that was a good explanation of why we do this.
Great story, Noel, wonderful. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so the, again, our Police Resource, School Resource Officer Agreement will be on the agenda as an item for individual action at our Monday, December 10th meeting. So as you review the contract, if you have any questions, you could get to Dr. Hillman in advance of that. Our next item is combined polling places for future elections, excuse me, elections. Dr. Hillman?
In 2017, Minnesota Legislature required school districts on an annual basis to approve any potential combined polling places that they might have for the following election year. Now, I want to be very clear upfront, we have no intention of running any special elections in 2019, but this is an action we're required to take by the Minnesota Legislature. And so what the key thing is, is that in the past, school districts would, if you remember, even in 2017, when we had our election, we were required to adopt those polling places up to, it was something like 70-some days in advance of the election. They're trying to standardize that across the system. And in addition, one of the new requirements is that you are not allowed to have a polling place other than what are the typical polling places within your school district. So in some cases in the past, when a school district might combine their polling places, they may do it in their school building, which may not be a traditional polling place, or trying to make sure that there was some alignment. But we're now required to adopt this each year. So, you know, after the election last year, we adopted just the same combined polling places that we had had for the 2017 election, as we have, of course, it came less than a month, you know, after we administered that election. During last winter, Director of Finance Val Murstorf, who is as Deputy Clerk, this is one of her areas of responsibility, and also working with Anita Azzi, who is, you know, in the new role of Administrative Assistant Superintendent School Board, who also has some election responsibilities. When we look at, if we have to run an election on our own, completely by ourselves, we have a concern about our capacity to operate more than five polling locations. Even when we looked at the eight polling locations that we had in 2017, of which we only actually were responsible for three, because the city is responsible for the other five, we ran into substantial issues with simple things of administering the election, like recruiting election judges. We actually ended up having to secure election judges from outside of our jurisdiction, because there were not enough people to be able to do that within the system. So we really tried to analyze, what do we think we would be able to actually administer if we were to have to hold a special election? Now, remember, a special election can be more than just a bond referendum. A lot of people think, oh, a special election means bond referendum. In cases where, in some school districts where if a board member resigns during their term, you have the ability to appoint someone to handle that until the next election date, and that, as you know, the law has changed in the last several years. So you will see districts, from time to time, have to operate a special election in a year where there's no other elections on the ballot, you know, for a school board member. So we are looking at, thinking about, what are the, what's the capacity that we have responsibly to administer an election? And so what I did is I went back to 2011. So in 2011, when we ran the operating levy, and it was in November, but it was in a year where there were no other elections on that ballot, I went back to those combined polling places, which we had gotten positive feedback on, and that's what I have brought forward to you. Now, since we have done the, I know that Chair Pritchard has a few suggestions, because one of the things that we had not realized since 2011, the city has changed some of their polling locations and some of their wards and jurisdictions, so it's even a little bit different now than it was then. Again, to be very clear, we're not planning to run an election, but we figured that this is the time, when we don't have something to take, you know, something steering us to have a logical explanation of what we think we can actually do. And so I would even argue that we might say five polling places might even be a little more than what we think our capacity is, but when we went back, we went back to looking at what was the most, one of the most recent successful operations, where we ran the entire operation, and what was the appropriate number of polling places. So there is a precedent for how we've done this. It does seem that something that we want to tell you will stretch us, but we also know that we're cognizant and have heard from the public about trying, if we have a special election, to try to mitigate the costs that we have, you know, for the election. This is an attempt to try to address all of those issues by still having a robust election with a number of polling places. In addition, I think one of the things that is different moving forward is, you know, the advent and the change in the law in early voting. If you, when you, when you looked at that abstract the last time, you saw a substantial increase of the people who had voted what we used to call absentee, right? But if you even think about, you know, the previous 2016 election, you know, that was, you still had to have a reason to vote absentee. Now, there isn't that, you don't have to have that reason. So if we were in a special election, we would also really be pushing people to say, hey, there's also early voting available. So that changes the tenor a bit of these kinds of elections. But again, we're required to adopt a resolution issue, we're not asking you, it's not a resolution, yeah, it is a resolution, actually. So we are asking you to consider this, we don't, are not asking for you to do this tonight, we do have to do it by December 31st, but what I did is I went back into our recent past and found something that had been successful, where we also think we would have the capacity to actually administer the election.
Okay, so what I, again, I had looked at, maybe I'll just mention what the changes that I would like to recommend, and we can make that a part of the overall discussion. So one thing that I had gone back and looked at was 2010 was the premise for which we determined our voting locations for 2011, but there's been some movements since then, and I think there's a couple changes I just wanted to present, and then we could have discussion on as well. So the Ward 2 Precinct 1, which is on your spreadsheet, under the First United Church of Christ, so Ward 2 Precinct 1, they normally vote at United Methodist Church, so it would be my recommendation, then, that we would keep them at the United Methodist Church. And what happened there was they had, back in 2010, they were actually voting at City Hall, and so we moved them to the UCC, but since then, they are, United Methodist is where they, where they currently vote. So I would recommend, then, that we would move that to United Methodist, so that Ward 2 Precinct 1 would continue to vote where they normally vote. The second change is just beneath that, the United Methodist Church, Ward 2 Precinct 2, back in 2010, they were voting at the Methodist Church. We moved them, we kept them there for 2011, but again, since then, they have been moved to the NCRC. So I would recommend that, rather than move them to Methodist Church, we would move them to the NCRC. So in other words, they would continue to vote where they normally vote. Then the other change, then, would be Ward 3 Precinct 1, if you go up to St. John's, which is second on the spreadsheet, they normally vote at the Norfield Retirement Community, the NCRC, so we would keep them at the NCRC.
And that's actually is the Norfield Retirement Community? That's the?
Oh, Norfield, oh, right, I was thinking NCRC, I apologize. So we would, we would keep them at St. John's, and I apologize for that, I was reading NCRC and Norfield.
And that is confusing now that we have.
It is confusing, I'm sorry.
Polling locations at both the Norfield Retirement Center and the NCRC.
So two recommended changes there. Then, the last change, then, would be under the Norfield Community Resource Center, the Ward 4 Precinct 2, which is at the bottom of that, we, that is the students that normally vote at Bunrock, and for proximity reasons, I would recommend that we have them vote at St. John's, because that's closer to their current polling location at Bunrock Commons. So there would be, there would be three changes, then, two of which are reflective of where they currently vote, and keep them where they vote, and then in the case of the St. Olaf Bunrock Commons, we would just move them to St. John's, because it's closer to their current polling location.
And for clarity, you know, just, I think sometimes people look at that Bunrock Commons location, they assume that it's only St. Olaf, but actually, there are quite a few homes within that area that are assigned to that, so it isn't, it is just, it's not a college poll, it just, we happen to be using the college as the polling place, but there are a number of registered voters who live off-campus who are assigned to that location, so just for people's clarity about that.
So I hope that wasn't confusing, but I wanted to put that out there as part of our discussion. So questions, comments on our, on the recommendations? Ellen?
So I have a question on Julie, so is there a reason that the Ward 3 Precinct 2, there's Rice County and Dakota County, that one is, goes to St. John's and one is, goes to Buffalo, that we're trying to balance? Is that why we're splitting up the Buffalo voters?
What we're trying to do there, and Val, if I can have you chime in on this too, is that when we administer an election, we still work with the counties and the county auditor's office. And I think it's just fair to say there are some differences in how each county handles the reporting. And so, for example, we have part of Good Hugh County, as you know, when we have an election like this, Rice County traditionally has actually just done the work for Good Hugh County. The reporting requirements for those counties are quite different. Is that anything you want to add?
Other questions, comments? Ellen?
I just had one more, this is not a question, this is a comment, I think this is really smart, and what I like about us doing this proactively is thinking about, I've been on the board, where in personal circumstances, had board members have had to consider that they couldn't fulfill their term for, and I would their term for, and I would hate to have with the new legislation, someone feel compelled to have to, you know, deal with personal circumstances really challenging because they're feeling an obligation to try to save taxpayers' money and being in that tight spot. So I think this is really smart, because that is a circumstance that we could face at some point, and we hope, we hope we never have to, but we've been on, I've been on the board. I know Noel's been on the board when that's happened, so it's useful to have this in place.
No, I think that's a really, a solid reason for us to look at that. I think clearly, there is no intent for us to hold a special election for a bond referendum.
There is no intent for us to hold a special election.
But that school board piece is out there, and the legislators, that was really hard work that groups like Schools for Equity and Education did with legislators to try to get them to understand some of the legislation around. We were always able to do, I actually got on the board as a special appointment initially. And now, if a board member has to resign with more than a year out to their term, we are required to potentially have to hold a special election. And there was a circumstance, a small community had to do that, and they had to run a special election, which cost them thousands. And I believe there were 65 votes that were cast. So, I mean, you know, and those are the kinds of stories you go to legislators with, and we hope that that's always sort of on the back burner with our groups talking to legislators, but we have to live in the now, which is this really restrictive law. So I think for nothing else, we have to, Ellen, you articulated well, a solid reason for doing this. Okay. Other questions? Amy.
I was wondering how the numbers balance out, and if we even care if the numbers balance out?
We actually do very much. The issue, and when you get this report, the next time, we believe we'll have that balanced number for you. Now, some of it's geography, and some of it is trying to balance the number of registered voters. Because this was a statewide election this year, we actually have to get a little bit more additional information from the Secretary of State about the number of school district registered voters in each of these locations, because there are some places, for example, Aaron Township is a good example, where in the entire precinct of Aaron Township, only a portion of those registered voters in Aaron Township actually live within the school district. So when you look at the numbers that the Secretary of State has for the November election, it includes all of the registered voters in that precinct, which is more than just the registered voters of the school district. So I started to do the spreadsheet the other day and realized, I can't do this for you right now, because, so we will have to request that information from the Secretary of State, which we will do. I'm hopeful that we can get it from them. Otherwise, what we can do is we can go back to 2017, you know, because we do have accurate numbers on the registered voters as of, at the end of the day, at the end of November. There were so many, there are so many additionally registered voters this year across the nation, you know, and specifically in Minnesota, that we would want to make sure that we have as accurate information for you as we possibly can. Now, some of the changes that we're talking about, we just have to be straightforward, will adjust the number of people, registered voters, and that's a piece that we have to go through in terms of just balancing the number of registered voters you put at a location with, modifying, what are they voting, trying to make it the most convenient that you possibly can. Now, that's, that does not help the rural precincts coming into the city. We try to put them at the closest one to their township. But again, when you think about it, there are 20-some precincts that the district is involved in. We just don't have the capacity to run that. There's just no way that's responsible to the taxpayer, and it just, there's no way that with our lean staff, we could run that. So looking at what we can do in the most reasonable way, balancing the numbers is important as well as balancing geography.
Early voting would happen at one of the schools?
Most likely, early voting would happen in our district office. In 2017, early voting happened at City Hall, because if you remember, there was one city council member for a special election, actually. It was actually a special election to replace Mayor Poundell's former seat. And so we were actually quite fortunate that the city had to run an election for that, because we could piggyback on their efforts. And we just can't say enough positive things about Deb Little and the city's election project. They are excellent, and they really know what they're doing, and they are very, very helpful to us. And so we really appreciate that. Even if we were running an election where they're not involved, they've also been willing to give us advice and thought processes and those things.
Great. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll review this, or we'll address this at our December 10th ordinance, so we come into the items of the state that we have to approve by December 31st. Okay. So next, we have Director of Student Activities, Joel Olson here, which is great to see Joel here again. Just a reminder, his updated Fall Activities 2018 report was part of the table file. Welcome, Joel.
Hi.
Been very patient with us entire evening.
So I wanted to come before you, and I've done this in my previous schools that I've been at, is that after each season, give a kind of a short summary of how we did and good things that are going on in our programs. So with the fall season just ending, just wanted to give you an update for the fall. If you can see at the top, we had 491 students participate in our athletics and activities programs. That does not include clubs and other things like that. Those numbers we can get as well. So that number jumps up significantly with our fine arts, choir, band, orchestra, the fall play for those things. And so you can see that we offer as many programs as we can at the high school league level in the fall. And then the other competitive activities, these are all activities that might not, may or may not be state high school activities, but they're also competitive. So they travel, they compete against other schools. And then we also have the band, choir, orchestra, fall play, and then upcoming with rock and roll revival. Clubs and organizations, these are clubs that we have on file that are running and have run in the past. I have noticed out in the hallways, I see some new ones that are popping up, so I want to get a handle on what those are, so we can make sure we include those as well. Some of the achievements and accomplishments this fall, the soccer teams, both boys and girls, got into the quarterfinals and the semifinals respectively. Girls Swim and Dye had a great year. They were the 1AA true team champ and the state high school league 1AA championship. So they went to state as a team, and if you look below there, all the individuals that made up that team was pretty impressive. They ended up placing 14th at the state tournament. I think there was 42 total teams at the state tournament, so placing 14th was a pretty neat thing. Volleyball made it to the semifinals of Region 1 AAA, and they were also the conference champions for the second year in a row. And football ended up being the one 5A runner-up to the eventual state champion Owatana Huskies this past weekend. And so you can see that the individuals, and I won't mention all of them, but all the swimmers that made it to the state tournament. Some of the important pieces I want, as much as we have good things going on, the competitive arena, we also have good students. And you can see the GPAs from the state high school coaches association, which qualify gold or silver, the 3.75 to 4.0 for gold, and 3.5 to 3.74 for silver. Football team was a gold academic winner with an All-State Academic, Mitchell Stanchina. Volleyball also was gold with Academic All-State, Lily Hollenrung, Rachel Kelly, Lanale Arson, and Cora Rezak. And then the girls tennis team was a silver award winner. So that says a lot about the kids, not only from an athletic and competitive standpoint, but also from an academic standpoint. In the fine arts area, our town played six shows. Wonderful program, wonderful production. Hopefully, you were able to see that. Orchestra, band, and choir fall concerts. And then we have our choir concert coming up in a week and a half, give or take, over at Carlton, or St. Olaf.
Say Carlton, this is the traditional.
Carlton, yep. So excited to hear that. You heard, I think, some of the choir kids out in the hall. We also have a large number of kids sign national letters of intent to continue on their athletic careers at the post-secondary level, and so you can see those students there as well. Tim Torsonson was the 1 AAA volleyball coach of the year, so coaching honors to him. And then items to consider are just things that I propose for you just to think about and for something that I'd like to eventually come back to talk to you about. This one, thanks for the gymnastics one, for approving that purchase. If you haven't gotten over to the facility over at the Kmart building, I encourage you to go take a look. It was amazing crew of people putting that together, putting it up, and it looks really sharp over there. And so if you get a chance to go watch them practice, by all means, do that. And then I know Tom Groutmann had done a presentation on why we play inside-out coaching a couple of years ago, and I'd love to do the same thing for you, to kind of tell you where it's at now. Two years ago was kind of the genesis of that, and it's now grown, and it's now, the National Football League Foundation is funding a lot of this from around the country. So this is kind of the, I would say, the home state of inside-out coaching, but is now reaching out to all areas of our country, in all the NFL cities. So we are really, doing really great things here in Minnesota. And every month, a cohort of ADs meet and get together to keep working on this initiative, and then we bring it back to our schools. So there's a lot of pieces to it that I'd love to bring back to you, so that we can all continue the work and make it more meaningful for you, for our community, for our kids and our coaches. So eventually, to come back and do a presentation on that. So, thank you.
Excellent. Yes, Joel and I had a chance to talk about the, definitely have Joel come back and do that presentation that we had initially from Tom in 2016, and a lot of exciting things we're able to talk about. So we'll look forward to figuring out when that will be placed on an agenda and have you come back for that for sure. So this is a great report. The academic awards with individuals and teens is not something we're used to be able to see. You know, usually, a lot of the sports are announced here at recognition, but we don't always get to some level of detail. Perhaps that's really great. Other questions, comments?
Yes, ma'am.
If we did want to check out the gymnastics area, when would be...
They practice every day, 3:45 to about 6 o'clock, 6:30. And so you can run over there, and it'll be open, and they'll be flipping, and jumping, and running.
Yes, it really didn't turn out well. There was, I had a chance just to stop by very briefly when they were installing the equipment last Wednesday, and there were literally dozens of people there working tirelessly to, first of all, unload the truck. So our buildings and grounds crew were supported by dozens of parents and athletes. I mean, this is a lot of equipment that was being unloaded the day before Thanksgiving. By the time I got there, most of the equipment had been installed. Really great work, you know, from Val, turning on a dime to get the equipment here and executing a lease for no cost to us, which is really positive, to Mr. Olson helping the program work through the modifications, the uncertainty that they've had, Jim Colseth, Tracy Clausen and his crew. And again, all these parents who are just, the dedication is really heartwarming to see people just rallying to the cause to say, let's get this taken care of. So really a positive success story.
It's a big building. Where do you go in out there?
You go right in the front building, so it's the entryway immediately to the right of the movie theater.
The old Kmart, maybe.
The old Kmart building, right to the right. It's immediately to the, to the right of the movie theater entrance.
It's the main Kmart entrance.
Correct. Yes, that's exactly it.
Other questions, comments?
I really appreciate Joel.
Well, I had, oh, this is great. It's just so fun that we now have a plan for you to come back. Well, first of all, with the presentation and then sort of quarterly type updates. My question was, you know, we talk about enrollment all the time. So at the high school at 1372, what might that do to the classes that were competing in?
They are, the state high school league will start that, they started the process already of, because every two years, you get reclassified depending on enrollment. The October 1 numbers come in from the MDE, and then the, schools can try to opt up or opt down depending on where they might want to fall in the class. Also, they use free and reduced numbers, so you might have a large school population, but with free and reduced numbers, that's a 40 percent, they take 40% of that school with free and reduced and bring that down. So a lot of moving up and down, and we are right on this line of up or down. And we could see in some sports where we might move up, like in hockey, we might go to 2AA, or soccer, go to 2AA. In football, I don't see us moving up in football, because that's pretty set. But there's a lot of other conversations within the state about having, are these breakdowns the right number? So football is the top 32 teams, and then it goes down from there. Is that a, is that a good, it's just an arbitrary number. Is that the way it should be in every sport? Should we only have three classes in every sport? Should we have four classes? Should we have two? So those are conversations that are happening in addition to where we're going to get placed. So it'll be interesting, like the legislature piece in January, it's interesting, the high school league piece will be interesting as we move forward into the spring to see where we're going to end up, so.
So enrollment, you don't have a choice to stay where you are. If your enrollment is X, you are moved up.
Yes, yeah, yep.
But there are some schools who, just for the nature of competition.
You'll see like St. Thomas, they opt up to the highest class in hockey and football, where they could stay at a lower level. Creighton, Irmaal, some of those schools like that. But you'll see like Minneapolis North, who is probably have 1100 or 1200 students, they're in Class A in football, which is, you know, one above nine-man because of that free and reduced population. So it's a lot of interesting dynamics to that, so.
Very interesting. Next to the world of high school activities for sure.
And I just want, Joel came to the last meeting, but again, we just want to reiterate, we're so thrilled that Joel has joined our team. In the few months that he's been with us, he's demonstrated a tremendous leadership acumen, positivity, and really continuing the long tradition of excellent Northfield High School Activities Director. So we really thank you for joining our team, Joel, and our community, and we look forward to many more years of it.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. We couldn't do this without you. And I know the kids would say that, and our coaches would say that as well. It all starts with you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So segueing into conversation we had about gymnastics, in the packet was the signed and executed lease agreement. So this is just for our files then?
Yeah, okay.
It's for information. Okay, excellent. So we are now at future meetings. We talked a number of times again, just one last reminder, Monday, December 10th, we will convene at 6:30 for the public hearing for World's Best Workforce, and then follow into our regular school board meeting at 7:00 PM. That will be it for our meetings for 2018. Monday, January 14th, 2019, will be our first meeting of the new year, which will include the organizational school board meeting, swearing in of new members, et cetera. Then we would go right to our regular school board meeting, all of that, both organizational and regular school board meetings, 7:00 PM. And then Monday, January 28th, 7:00 PM, regular board meeting, all of which are at the Northfield High School Media Center. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask first that we give Val a round of applause?
Oh, what a great... Well, great idea and well deserved. Thank you. Noel is moving that we adjourn. That's awesome. Okay. And seconded by Jeff. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You're adjourned.